Are we live?
I know, I gotta say, I'm live.
We're gonna go ahead and get started. So let's turn off phones and anything else that's prone to making noise. If you have any paperwork, please give it to Jim Curran, the Sergeant at Arms. And if you wish, you're always welcome to join us for the invocation and for the pledge. Invitation will be done by Commissioner Harrison, the pledge by Commissioner Yarborough.
Please join with me. We gather together today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. Please give us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Confidence in what is good and fitting. The ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Let us also remember those who are no longer with us as well as our servicemen and women engaged in issues around the world. And please give us the patience to listen to others. Amen.
Thank you for this opportunity. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good timing. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Bell. Yep, I'm just ready. Bell.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Freeling.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
Hinkleman. Majerick.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Bowrath.
Here.
Werfel. Here. Yarborough. Elliott.
Here.
Hinkleman.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 present.
Thank you. Some minutes last Thursday. Aren't made changes, their motion to approve. Moved by Martin, supported by Werfel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, the minutes are approved, Madam Clerk.
Can we add the special?
Oh, that's right.
Can we add the October 19th special fiscal year 2023 budget hearing minutes two?
Yes.
Should we just take another motion on that one?
Did you mean to do both? Did you?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Everybody said aye.
I wanna make sure.
Alright, so we did, we did both.
Thank you.
Communications.
You received one email from Jenny Kiebel, Marion County Farm Bureau, inviting you to attend the Marion County Farm Bureau Annual Board of Directors meeting to be held on Thursday, November 3rd at the Surratt Nature Center, received on October 24th. And then that sent it to you.
That's right. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Resolutions, we have a few. If anyone wants to talk about those, this would be the time to do it. Public comment on resolutions that are on the agenda. I'm not aware of anything coming in at the 11th hour. I don't see any added resolutions, so it's just these few that are on the agenda. If you want to talk about it, now is the time. Hearing nothing, we'll go to the consent calendar. No one has asked to take anything off, so a motion to approve as submitted is in order.
So moved.
Moved by Scott. Supported by Bowrath. Any discussion, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, I do wish to make the board, I do wish to make the board aware that on Resolution B 2210099, I will be abstaining from requisition 60873 for rev excavation out of abundance of caution. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Other than that, any comments? And Madam Clerk, you'll make note of that.
Yes.
Extension.
Yes, I will.
Alright, with that then, would you please call the rule?
Curran.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman. Majerick.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Bowrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 ayes.
Thank you. Committee reports, Madam Chair of Finance.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our and our administrator came in and talked to us. We talked a bit about medical examiner services and just, just some general things. Our next person was the Christopher Swihardt, who's the Information Systems Director. And he gave us a memorandum and there were a number of subjects, categories, and it's projects and progress, I'm sorry, projects and process and update. And then on the other side was projects that were completed in 2022. And we discussed different things that we wondered about. And we asked, and you will receive all the board members, a copy of this so you can know what's going on in our, in that department, what our progress is. And then let me see what we did. We conferred on the weekly bills and road payables, made a motion. We accepted our minutes. And our executive assistant to the administrator, and that Christie came in talking to us about board appointments, and that will come to you next week. Those are our
Thank you. Questions for finance?
Oh, excuse me, I, I forgot here. We had two waivers that came to us. And one of them is for, both of them are for the road department. One about some blades that we needed to get, and another one about some professional services for the road building and grounds through Abinmars. Those were, we agreed on that.
Does that stimulate any questions? Alright, Mr. Chair of Personnel and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also met this morning. We reviewed our minutes, approved those. We will present to you at our next meeting, two agreements. One with Orchard Hills, this is for the support of the recycling program. And then that actually is for this calendar year. And so we'll, somehow it did not get moved along like it should have, but this will cover us for the current year. The second will be a proposal to reinstate the college course reimbursement policy. We've had it slightly updated, and so this is one that was, the county had in place a number of years ago, and so we're proposing to reinstate that. And so that will come to you at our next meeting. We also considered two advanced step hire requests. One from the Health Department and one from Building and Grounds. Both of the individuals that they are bringing forward are well qualified, both by education and training as well as experience. And so we approved both of those. We had a good discussion, a quarterly report from our GIS department. Lex came in, talked through all the support that he's been given to the broadband department or effort, as well as a number of the other things that they're dealing with. And really very informative, very interesting presentation from Lex. We also had Carrie Smatanca Haney come in and talk about a complement change for the trial court. This is replacing a clerk to position at an information desk with a court security officer. And we did, we considered that, asked Carrie a number of questions, and then did sign off on that. And so that was interesting. And then we had our administrator and our chairman in. We talked a bit about the Western Michigan Med contract, as well as a couple of the other issues that we've been dealing with related to recruitment or retention of staff. And I think that pretty much covered, covers everything that we talked about.
Any questions for PHS? Alright, Mr. Chair of Admin, sir.
Thank you, Matt. First into CS this morning was Robert Ray with Building and Grounds. The first thing he told us is his staff, and I'm gonna read this to you as he wrote it to us. He said, "This is worthy of noting that since Chris Smith having become his assistant, and Skyler Johnson becoming the maintenance supervisor, Sylvester Harris evening supervisor, with having Jackie Ward as our office manager, we have developed into strong and positive management team." I think Robert is really proud of the people he has working for him. And staffing, Robert conveyed to us that he does have a position that he is filling now, but he's also contemplating contracting a temporary hiring service. And, and I think Brian has mentioned to all of us, he's not the only department that's contemplating that. To help get all the work done. He just doesn't have enough people and can't get them in quick enough. He provided us pictures of the Baroda Garage, the roof repairs and whatnot that that needs. He showed us a picture of maple trees along by the court that he said are stressed. And he said that they're not gonna trim them. They had an arborist come in and look at them, and hopefully they can bring those trees back and they'll be in good shape again. But for right now, he said they're not gonna trim them, they're not gonna do anything with them. He also provided us what they signed for the courthouse. Basically says employees only. They had a little discussion about that and talked to you about that a little bit further for some occasion. After Robert, we had Carrie. Just talked about in our bringing before the board. After Carrie, we had Road Department, Mark Heiliger. And Dave Bowrath is going to report out on Mark's report.
Mark was here just to bring us updated on an issue that's been going on in Hager for about a month, maybe six weeks. I first got a call about the middle of September, cuz we had gotten some rap, which is some recycled asphalt, which we routinely put down on dirt roads when we can get it and when it's available. Cuz it helps with costs of maintaining the dirt roads. You don't have to go out so many times to grade them, to put chemicals down for, you know, to keep the dust down and things like that. And they've got quite a few roads in the county that we've done that on. We got a complaint a couple last months. A gentleman who doesn't even live on that road, but he walks on the road and takes his dog for walks on the road. He doesn't like the smell, he doesn't like the way it is, he doesn't like the chunks. He had a lot of complaints, but he didn't have anything that concerned driving on the road. We've gone back and forth, we met with him, but unfortunately, we met on Thursday. Hager Township had their meeting on the previous Monday, where the writer from the Tri-City Record was there, and he wrote a whole page article on Hager people do not want that on their roads. And they, to make a long story short, Izzy wants us to go out and dig it up and take it off the roads. Well, that doesn't make sense and would never make sense to, you know, it's just financially, we, we don't want to do that. But we haven't finished the process on these roads because when the complaint came in, they'd only gone out for the first treatment. There was a couple more treatments involved to get, to get that rap. You know, smashed up, taking the chunks out, getting it smoothed out as best as possible. The, the big roller wasn't out there yet, which, when we met with the gentleman a week ago, Thursday, or everyone was invited, there was a mix-up on day, so Izzy wasn't there. But the gentleman who made the complaints, Alan Bodler, was there, and we listened to him. We had, Mark was with us, Kevin was with us. Two of the other supervisors were out there with us. I mean, it was, they explained it to him, and he wasn't, you know, he wasn't gonna be convinced that this was a bad thing. But his main complaint was walking on the roads, bicycling on the roads and dogs on the roads and the smell. Had nothing to do with driving on the roads or the fact that it's, it's a cost savings to the county, because we get that rap for nothing. It's when the, the, the people who build the roads have extra that they've taken off the roads. They generally use that recycling into new stuff, but when they have too much of it, then they leave it, you know, they, they ask us if we have roads we can put it on. And then most townships around like them and have had them. We've got one in Hager Township that we went and looked at right afterwards, and then, and it really is so much better. I lived out there for 12 years on those dirt roads. And I know once they're grated and smoothed, they're nice, a week later they're, you know, and, and they get, and a lot of them are hilly out there in, in Hager. It's, you know, the dunes and things, and the water's always washing everything out. So anyway, if you see that article or hear anything about it in the Tri-City Record, it was in this week. I, I wish the gentleman would have waited, at least until we had our meeting, you know, with, with them because of planes, or we could have finished smoothing out the road, which, which hasn't been done yet, cuz they stopped the treatments once the complaints came in. And we still have to satisfy Izzy and the board on how we go further, but we're, we're on top of it and, and, and we will report back as things go on. So if you have any concerns, you're welcome to call me or Brian, Mark.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate that report. Then we had Brian in the CS, he talked to us also about the Western Michigan contract that is up at the end of this year. We gave him the okay. I don't know if you're gonna bring an authorized resolution, but we gave him the okay to extend that contract for 90 days so they can work out the details. What happened is the prosecutor's office needed one of their doctors as an expert witness. That person had left the employment and gone to another state. And there were some issues about bringing them back to Michigan. So Brian and Steve, our prosecutor, wanna work with them to get that ironed out so that we're not being charged a lot for these people to come back and testify. So we're gonna do the 90-day extension so they can work the bugs out on that. We have some resolutions for you. Resolution ending in 390. This is for the court, trial court. Let's see, apply for grant. Oh, there are additional funds available. So this is a grant that they've already received, and they're, the court is eligible for an additional $41,000 in funding. So this resolution authorizes them to apply for those funds. Resolution ending in 391, this is again with the court. This is on Budget 2021. They were granted through the MDOC, $175,000. They did not spend all that, that they were allocated, so they did not spend $50,000, so we're given $50,000 back. So that's what that resolution is about. Resolution 394, this is for the Sheriff's Department and the snowmobile enforcement program. We get, this is to receive the money. We get $4,000 from the grant. There is a match of $705, so the total budget is $4,705. And that's what this resolution is for us to receive those funds. That is our report.
Questions for admin?
One, Dave, I saw the article in the paper. And I saw the article, sorry. I saw the article in the paper, and pretty pointed that, is there anything that you can do with those tailings? I see the road departments here, is there anything that you can do with the tailings to run them through a gravel plant first to make the chunks smaller so that, one way or the other, you're gonna break them up or you're gonna press them down? I assume that's what you're doing with the roller when you go out there to fix the road. Is there anything you, you could do so that their lumps aren't there?
Well, the, the processes afterwards, break those, break those down, but I know it doesn't break all of the, the great big chunks down, but as time goes on and you drive over it, and the summer heat and things, from what they tell me, that helps them meld together.
And that's probably where the complaints are coming from.
Yeah, how they, how they come out of, you know, from, from their plant to us, I'm not sure if they can re, you know, recycle them more than they do, or if that's how they do it, you know, for their operation, and they're not gonna do it. I, I don't know that, I have to ask Mark.
Mr. Chair, is it all right if I ask?
Certainly.
Mark, mark that question. If, if we run it through, if, if we run it through a gravel plant to get rid of the chunks before they go out there, does that stop the complaints?
So that would, that would add an additional cost, sir.
And I would tell you It's a free product, so that's why. So it's a completely, so during the summer, you'll see them grinding pavement, and they've got those big white machines with the conveyor belt out that throws debris, throws the recycled asphalt into a dump truck. That's what we get.
Who are you?
I'm sorry, I'm Mark Heiliger, I'm the director of the Road, Marion County Road Department.
What's your name?
Mark Heiliger.
Okay, thank you.
So we get those and we apply those to the road, and then we go over it several times with what's called a sheep's head roller that has a compacting function to it. And we break it up even further as we put it down. So running it through, one, I'm not sure off the top of my head whether that's an option to run it through another milling process, but if we did, it would, it would no longer be a free product. But then, but if you did it, is it possible that you wouldn't have to run the sheep's head over the top of it? We would still have to compact it down anyway. Compact it, but not with the sheep's head, you could just use a roller. That would, we do that with, the sheep's head is one of the steps of the processes, whether it's recycled asphalt or gravel. Okay. Just, I'm just trying, because I, you know, like I said, I read the article. Article's pretty pointed, you know, and I think the thing that the people are upset about is that they don't want to use their vehicles and their tires to break down those lumps, you know, they want, they like to have that done for them, so that was, that was the concern. That's what I drew from the article when I read it, you know. And also, I would note, Commissioner, so the reaction from the neighborhood to the crews and some, even some of the service requests that we've received has been positive. Alright, we've even had a service request come in to people asking, when are you, I would like to have that put on my road.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
So Mark briefed the admin committee today. He did a slide deck just showing before and after. If it's okay, what I'll do is we'll get it shared with the full board in the, in the next hour, so you can all see exactly what admin saw, because we anticipated that some of you may get phone calls on this. Mark grabbed before, after shots, and then provided a timeline on some of the complaints that have come in from the township. We'll get that pushed out today, and you, you'll see that information.
It was, you know, the, the part that was, that, I appreciate knowing that, because it's nice to know. It was, you know, the, the part that was, that I appreciate knowing that because it's nice to know that other people appreciate the process. What bothered me most in the article is that Izzy, you know, as a township supervisor, that, that, that he was bothered by the incident, by, by the, by the use of that material so badly. That's, that's the one that got me, yeah, mostly, um, wondering if, you know, what, what, what was actually out there? Well, you know, what it looked like out there. So.
We were, we met out there at, at the roads. And so we were looking at it. I, I mean, I lived out there for 12 years on them roads, maybe two blocks away from there. And we went over and looked at Wilson afterwards and I would much rather have had that rap put down on our road, you know, because you know, the, the, the dirt roads are fine and when they're graded, but they don't last very long. They had about, about a week and they go bump, bump, bump and they're gone.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Question?
Yeah, I, uh, used to use that product on my yards, in my shipping yards. And, uh, when we got it at a good price, it's an excellent product. It flattens out almost like asphalt when, uh, after a good summer. And I never noticed too many, I mean, they, yeah, they just break down everything else and flattens and you don't dig into the dirt. You don't get into potholes and stuff. But it's pretty nice to have. We, we look forward to it.
Questions, comments? What's best practices, my understanding? Rick, may I find my wrong? Uh, upwards of eighty percent recycled material can be blended in with asphalt from the plant and you get a satisfactory result. And you're being environmentally conscious as well.
Material they use constantly for new roads. They put it on the new roads. They use their old stuff. And when they get a, you know, too much of it that they can ship, that they have to ship.
Too far away, then they, they try to give it away locally and, and that's what this was. But the one gentleman, he, his, his biggest complaint was the smell and I don't, you know, well.
Just one more comment. I would like to make the commissioners, if, if you're interested, the EPA has never classified this material as hazardous or otherwise. In fact, throughout the website that where I gained my information and looked at the abstract of several studies concerning this, it's actually encouraged to be recycled. It's used nationwide and outside the U.S. Just saying, same, same thing we're doing.
There's a lot of information on it. I mean, it's, it's, the, the gentleman was making the main complaints with saying that we're going to contaminate the water and all this other stuff because the rain would wash off of this chemicals and blah, blah, blah. And, and I understand his opinion is fine, but we had the whole crew out there and experts and, and.
And then could you have that, uh, slide deck? I don't know. We put it up and then you want to copy? For the paper? Okay. Yes, sir.
I have another comment on that material. Yes, I know, um, in a lot of rural areas that have dirt driveways, that is a recommended, uh, substance that if you can get it to put it down on dirt driveways, because it does compact down. Uh, and naturally it all takes time, but it does compact down. And after it gets all to where it's supposed to be, it is almost like an asphalt driveway and it's very inexpensive for the homeowner even to use it.
We use it on one of our roads coming back onto our property. Get it from people who think that, I think Saccrete actually sells it and get it by the pallet, fifty pound bags where you can get smaller. Um, and that stuff's ninety plus percent recycled and it pours out. It's not lumpy or anything. Um, but was the dog complaining about the smell or was it the person?
He didn't have a dog with him.
Okay. I mean, because you know, the smell, it's out in the open, whatever.
Yeah.
Product. I mean, that's going to dissipate.
The smell does go away after time, you know, so you don't even notice it or anything.
So what's the state of the road right now? Has it been pulverized and?
So, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if you turn around. So the picture's on the left of the initial application of the rap. So when the complaint came in, I went out and surveyed the area and I took some pictures. Uh, I, I think the best picture to highlight what his initial complaint was is the bottom left. Um, so there were some of those and that's like the, the newspaper article had one chunk, which I didn't see one that was bigger than a dollar bill when I was out there, but evidently he found one. Uh, and then if I was correct, the commissioner's attention to the pictures on the right, that is the exact same section of the road that I took the pictures on the left on. And that's after we've gone through, did it with the sheet head roller and then hit it with the steel drum roller and graded it out.
So that's what it looks like today.
No, that's what it looks like right now. The really nice thing about this product is where gravel road, we would have to service at least once a year. This product allows us, gives us a three to four year window before we have to go back and do something with it. And the best example within the county is there's a road in mine, I can't remember the name of it, but it's in the vicinity of Front Street where we put down a four inch layer of rap and treated it. It's been in place for eight years and we, the only maintenance we've done to it is to fill a couple of potholes here and there.
Okay. Seventy two thousand dollars spent last year on Hager dirt roads, just grading and putting the chemical down to keep the dust. And that's a yearly thing that I know it happens every year, every day. Come get complaints about the roads, but you know, the dirt roads and they get bumpy.
I think on behalf of all of us, I'm going to say, we appreciate what you've done. Appreciate taking the time to go out and meet and, um, I'm mindful of that expression, no good deed goes unpunished.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We always try to operate on good faith and partnership with our residents.
Yeah. All righty. Are we good on this? Okay. Um, anything else for admin? Okay, we'll go to commissioner reports. We'll start with John and go clockwise.
Just real quickly, I had a, uh, John. Was to be a meeting, but it, uh, they didn't have a quorum. It was for land preservation. It was yesterday. Uh, but, uh, although no decisions could be made, uh, we did get an update. There is an application for land preservation that will come to the full board. I believe it's on the, around the November tenth timeframe for us that we'll have that to consider. That'll go back to Katie Montoya where she's already scored the application for land preservation and then it will get submitted. Reason that she'll step it up a little bit is as far as the process goes, she'll do it because, um, she's got a December sixteenth or twenty third, uh, date that it has to be submitted by. So she'll need some time to get that in. So you'll be seeing that and, um, it'll take place, uh, I think, I think they're going to try to get together. Land Preservation Board is going to try to get together again on, on the 10th of November, right after this meeting. They're meeting a separate room because I think Brownfield is meeting here or something. So, but you'll be seeing that at that time. So that's all I have.
Uh, on Monday, I had the opportunity to present to the Strategic Leadership Council for their fall summit on, um, the work that's been ongoing for broadband and to update them on the DCS technology maps and also roll out the, uh, work that our GIS department has been doing. They've created a real time dashboard to highlight how many parcels we actually have that qualify for broadband, broadband funding. And so that will be live is, remind me again, did like say at the end of this week? Um, so that link will be live. You can go to it through our website, um, through Beacon, although there is a layer already existing on the Beacon, uh, portal. And then also in the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission's story map that they had put together, which is an ongoing timeline of what we are doing on the work for broadband within Bering County. So that's my report. Thank you.
I participated in a, uh, strategic planning retreat for St. Joe Public Schools. I'm also attended the Strategic Leadership Council and heard the fabulous presentation by Commissioner Freeling. And it actually was very informative and, uh, I think well represented all the hard work that, uh, BC Business put in on broadband. And then also I had several meetings dealing with staffing in the courts and the clerks, um, offices over the last, um, weeks.
I also attended the planning session with St. Joe's schools. Um, and I've been, um, in constant discussion with, uh, Rick Compton over at, uh, Riverwood regarding trying to offer better solutions, uh, when it comes to serving our community when it comes to, uh, mental health. And so that's with the schools, with the Boys and Girls Club, um, just countywide, especially focusing.
Excuse me. Could you raise your volume up a little bit so we can hear?
Yes, sir. Um, so we, we just want to, um, increase awareness about mental health and servicing the area because we know that that's a huge need and we've been working with Riverwood, with the schools, with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, just trying to make sure that mental health is a, a huge priority for the county.
Thank you.
Yes. I attended the nine one one along with, uh, Commissioner Werfel and Commercial, uh, Commissioner Volrath. Um, basically they're, they're getting new furniture, new carpet. They're excited about that. VHF is still going away, December thirty first. Uh, they just got a couple of cleanup things to do with Medic One and Smackus and that should be good. That's my report.
No report.
I, uh, attended the MAC HHS Committee this week. Uh, we had a nice discussion on Senate Bill ten eighty, which is about creating new county boards and commissions um, regarding opioid deaths and, and overdoses and things like that. So that was quite interesting. Um, not expecting that to move very far in the near future at all. Um, also I, the only thing I would add to, uh, Commissioner, um, Curran's comments about nine one one meeting um, is that maybe Brian can address some of this is that there was a, there's still the issue with the Buchanan City and Buchanan Township property issue, and that is where the tower is going is what Caitlin informed us. So, um, it shouldn't affect us, she said, but anyway, that was the only thing I'd add.
Do you want me to provide that up to you? Yeah, so we, uh, we're throwing a bit of a curve ball. So, um, Buchanan City and Buchanan Township appear to have a spirited debate going on about their jurisdictional boundaries. Buchanan Charter Township enacted their charter township in the past 12 months. And that appears to be based on some concerns of potential annexation by the city. We had a proposal in front of Buchanan Charter Township last week that would have taken a long, long, um, yeah, well, a, a piece of township property that was annexed improperly in the sixties into the city. It sits there today on our, uh, AEP site. There is acreage that is technically in the township despite it being completely surrounded by the city. That's where we plan to place our tower. We had worked through an agreement with both the township and City Hall to complete that annexation so that we would operate under one set of zoning rules for the tower construction. Unfortunately, uh, Buchanan Township decided to reject that annexation. However, in their meeting minutes, they did express support for our tower project and offered reassurance that they, while in rejecting the annexation, they had no concerns about our project. They had other concerns related to any type of annexation of township property into the city, despite this being a decades old issue. As a result, um, the, the pivot that we will have to, to now make is we will have to seek our zoning approval through Buchanan Township for the placement of the tower. And then any site improvements would then go through City Hall. And it is what it is. We're not going to fix that intergovernmental relationship, but we have repeated assurances and meeting minutes that show the township is in support of our project. And if we have to go through their zoning process, that they are keenly, uh, aware of the need for the, the tower project. So I'm not going to go into a lot of details as to why there is now a charter township, uh, for Buchanan. Does that address your question? You're welcome.
I'm anticipating then that it'll go to the Buchanan Charter Township Planning Commission.
Yes.
Could be handled with a variance.
Yes.
Should be that.
Yes.
And I have no report.
I, uh, went to the Nats, uh, meeting and of course they went over all the projects upcoming. Everything's on schedule. There's a couple of property owners that are, uh, not relinquishing right away. But other than that, there's still, should be done by this year. And they also got a letter from the state. They are receiving nine hundred thousand for future projects. And they're just have, they usually go out and confirm what, where, when and how they're going to get that and nobody's confirmed it yet. So they're going to be looking for projects to, in the future, and they're all pretty excited about that. That's my report.
Um, as you know, I wasn't here last week, so I'm going to give my report on critiquing the board meeting that I viewed.
On YouTube.
Um. You gave us a report last week.
Yes, that I have no report, but I, right, but now I have a report on the critiquing. Um, it is very difficult to hear if you do not tap your mic. Um, the other thing that it is very difficult is when, um, a, a person from the audience says they can't hear because there is no mic for that person, you can't hear kind of what they said. Uh, I was able to understand that Mr. Harrison was talking in a very soft tone, uh, which he was not. When Mr. Harrison then was instructed to make, speak louder, your voice became distorted to the rest of the viewers. Um, also that the people who decide to speak on public comment prior to getting to the microphone, you cannot be heard. That is the end of my report.
Much appreciated. Yes. Man.
I attended a meeting yesterday at the Benton Harbor Public Library. Um, and it's, uh, about working on a five year plan for the city. They've had a number of meetings in the community and it was well attended and, and very good ideas. Um, that was the last meeting that they were holding for, um, I believe for community input. And then I'd like to let you know that today at one o'clock, the land bank will be meeting in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. So tomorrow's, uh, Career Pathway Day at, uh, the Mendel Center. This is run by Michigan Works and literally every ninth grader within the county will be hauled over to the Mendel Center and walked through. There will be a variety of booths set up and it just showcases local career options within the county. Um, Health Department, Road Department and Parks Department are all going to be present. And you're not going to get ninth graders immediately going to work for you, but it sure doesn't hurt that in the next, uh, three to four years, that they've had a personal touch point with some of our departments. So that'll be tomorrow at the Mendel Center. Um, nine one one remodel is underway. We did have a little bit of a hiccup with, uh, some moisture being found on the first day of the project. Um, Caitlin and Robert really stepped up. So they coordinated, uh, Robert was able to get Villa Environmental on site immediately. And within 24 hours had confirmation that there was no mold present and the project was able to continue. So really good coordination between nine one one and Buildings and Grounds to ensure that the project was, uh, continuing to move forward. Last item is for admin committee. It's just a formal thank you. Today, the board has adopted a trail policy. This is something we've talked about for months and out of just about everything that I've watched committees work on, this is one that was difficult. And so to the admin committee, thank you for getting this thing across the finish line. But the bigger thanks go to the, uh, the people in the back, uh, between, uh, Mark, uh, representing the road department and Annette. Just a ton of time has gone into reworking multiple versions of the trail policy. And I just thank the staff for getting this in front of admin and to admin, thanks for getting it across the finish line. And I just thank the staff for getting this in front of admin and to admin, thanks for getting it across the finish line. You as a board will be getting an update from the Friends of Bering County Trails in the next couple of weeks. And this is critical that you have your, essentially your goal pulse, your guardrails, however you want to put it. You've got the policy now in place that will govern how future trails are developed across the county. This is excellent work. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Very good. We're at the point where we receive general public comments. Anything under the sun in two minutes or less, name and town, name and town. Anyone wish to be heard? Okay, well, we, we have one. We have a customer.
Hello, sir. Hager Township. Okay, I want to talk a little bit more about what I complained about last week. Now, let me read you, this is the official ballot. Both sides. Let me read you the Public Safety Millage Proposal, right? I find some mistakes in here. Shall the county of Bering repeal the existing public safety millage that will expire on December one, twenty forty, twenty twenty-four? Tax levy and replace it with a new annual public safety millage, which will be increased by up to point four-five mils. At forty-five cents per thousand bucks on all taxable properties within the county for a period of five years. Beginning with the December one twenty-two tax levy to expire December one, twenty twenty-six. The start of twenty twenty-two, at twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, how many years is that? But they say five years. To provide funds to pay for the operating capital improvement cost for providing public safety services within the county. If approved and the levy and the levy is full, this millage will raise an estimated three point nine nine, three million nine hundred ninety-two thousand. First calendar year of the levy based on the taxable value. Now, why didn't they put in there how much they're getting right now? And then people will see it's a twenty-eight percent increase. No, this thing, I'm not voting for it. If the public were to find out that they're, they're raising the taxes on that twenty, I told you last time, twenty-eight percent.
Two minutes.
Now, I ain't going to vote for it.
Yeah, Sheriff Paul Bailey. I live in Bering County and, and Bering Township. But I'm not here to talk about the millage. I'm here to give you an update about the animal control and the shelter. We're, we've been working out how we're going to be able to help clean out the dog kennel. So starting in next week, we'll be there every Saturday and Sunday in the morning for two hours to go in with four inmates with a deputy and clean the entire place today at noon. I'm meeting with my staff to see if we can go in on, on Wednesdays and Fridays to help out Ashley because of the, the short staffing. So we're, we're on our way to, to starting next week, but every weekend, because that's the hard time that she has people to trouble, to cover. We will be there with a deputy and four inmates for two to three hours and then he will go to his other jobs. So we have a working, we have a weekend crew. Brian Hall goes out every weekend and he works for a municipality, Richmond, Niles, St. Joe. This weekend on Saturday, he will be working for Lake Township with the tire recycling, like we did last week at, at the thing. And, and, and the, the townships reimburse us back for the deputies' time. We charge so much per day for taking a worker out. We will not charge the road, the, the, the shelter anything. We will go and do that. There will be no, you know, it's all county money, so why would we want to do that? So that was just where he'll start his day. So that's the update I had. So we're taking care of the problem until we can find people to hire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board. Number one, I want to thank the, the sheriff. This is something that I could not be happier about. Number two, I just wanted to stress, we have multiple full-time positions open in animal control. The board has approved the complement changes. So we have several full-time positions in addition to temporary positions. If the board can offer any help as far as pushing reminders out to your townships, to your social network. This is one where I am absolutely stressing to Ashley to get the help in there, but also to make sure that she's hiring the very best person. So if you can offer some help with casting a wider net, we'd appreciate it. With that said, Ashley is out there. She's been promoted into the other director's role. She is continuing to work with her staff, with the friends group, with the sheriff on the day-to-day management of the other kennel. But without a doubt, the sheriff is very effective at going out and getting loose animals. So the kennel is very much full and the this is one of those times where I could not tell you how happy I am that we're getting some help through, through the sheriff's office and through the inmates. It is greatly appreciated. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. In your, in your weekly update, there's been a reminder, Animal Control is continuing to host the trunk retreat. So if you want more details on it, you can give me a shot. Otherwise, just look at the weekly update. There's details that'll be posted in there. And you all are always welcome to stop by and say hi and adopt an animal.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll go to other business. Anybody have any? About announcements and reminders, you mentioned land bank is here.
At one o'clock today in this room.
Any others? All right, it's eleven twenty-two. We stand adjourned to next Thursday at eight thirty-five.